Good evening. I'm Sandra Lyon, the superintendent of the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District. It is our pleasure to host this evening's League of Women Voters Board Forum for the Candidates for the Board of Education. It is my pleasure now to turn this over to our moderator for the evening, Sandy Jacobson.
Thank you Sandy, and good evening and welcome from me. My name is Sandy Jacobson. It's my pleasure to be your moderator this evening and to welcome you to the Santa Monica Malibu Unified School District Board of Education Candidates Forum. I'll have to take a deep breath now. We're being...coming to you from the boardroom of the school district administrative offices. This forum is cosponsored by the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica and the Santa Monica Malibu PTA Council, working with City TV of Santa Monica. The League and the PTA are both nonpartisan, nonprofit organizations. We neither support nor oppose candidates for public office. During this forum, you will be hearing from the six candidates who are running for three open seats on the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District Board of Education. The individuals you elect will serve four-year terms beginning in December 2012. This forum will be replayed multiple times on Santa Monica City TV, channel 16, and 24/7 on cable, channel 99. We are also pleased that the Malibu forum held earlier this month will be showing on Santa Monica TV, City TV, and tonight's forum will be showing in Malibu on Local Access, channel 3. For a schedule of replay times, we invite you to go online to smvote.org. We will now turn to opening statements. Each candidate will introduce him or herself, and we'll have one minute. They will be speaking in alphabetical order. So we will lead off with you, Ben Allen.
Well, good evening, and thanks so much to the League of Women Voters and the PTA and all those who sponsored this event tonight. My name is Ben Allen, and I serve on the school board. I was first elected four years ago, in 2008. I grew up here in this community, attended district schools from kindergarten through 12th grade, and I'm very passionate about public education. When I was a law student, I served as the student member of the University of California's Board of Regents, and I worked on a lot of K-12 UC pipeline issues. I actually now teach education, law, and policy at UCLA Law School, and that's why I had to grow this little beard. When I first was elected to the board, we fell into an economic crisis, as a state, as a nation, and globally. And as other school districts systematically rolled back their libraries, counselors, nurses, summer school programs, musics, and the arts, and increased class sizes dramatically, this district was able to hold back and keep and preserve all of those key core programs that really make a difference for our kids and make this...the educational experience in our district so strong. I'm proud of that work. I worked hard on it, and that's why I'm asking for your vote for my reelection. Thank you.
Thank you, Ben. Jose Escarse, please.
Good evening, and thank you for coming tonight. My name is Jose Escarse. I'm a professor of medicine at UCLA. I have three children who've attended our schools. Two of them have graduated from Samo High, and the third one is a junior there now. I've been on the board for 12 years, and I'm proud that during my time on the board, our district has improved a great deal. Nonetheless, I know that there's still a great deal of work to do to make sure that we create schools that enable all our children to achieve their potential. I'm running for reelection because my commitment to the children of our district and to the idea that we need schools that offer both excellence and equality of opportunity has never been greater. Moreover, I've learned that my experience is a tremendous asset to the board and to the district as we try to navigate this time of crisis for public education in California. I've been endorsed by the Santa Monica Malibu Classroom Teachers, Community for Excellent Public Schools, our district's classified employees, and a wide range of parents, teachers, community education, and business leaders. It's been a privilege to serve my community as a board member for 12 years, and I look forward to putting my vision and experience to work on behalf of our kids for the next four. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. Karen Farrer, please.
Hi, my name is Karen Farrer. I would like to thank the League and PTA Council for sponsoring this event. I've been a parent and a volunteer in this district for 21 years. I have three children. Two of them are here tonight in the front row. When I first started volunteering at Webster School, I could have never imagined myself at this point running for elected office, and I'm not a politician, but I do care about this district. I'd like to see change, and I think we need it as soon as possible. It's time for inclusion, collaboration, focus, excellence, and accountability. I'd like to make a difference. I know that I can. I'm not just here representing Malibu. I would like to make change throughout the entire district. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Craig Foster, please.
Good evening. My name's Craig Foster. I'm a teacher. I'm a parent. I'm a current PTA president, and I'm a member of the district's financial oversight committee. Tonight, you're going to hear from three incumbents, two of whom have been on the board since 2000. They'll tell you that they've been successful. They'll tell you that the achievement scores continue to creep higher. They'll point to large amounts of new taxes they've enacted. They'll tell you their commitment to the minorities and disadvantaged of the district and walk a delicate line between admitting they've been largely unsuccessful in this regard after 12 years, but yet emphasizing this is their focus for the future. Tonight, you will also hear from three challengers running into the battle cry of reform. They will tell you of a district far off track despite the best of intentions. They will tell you of a greater achievement gap, the gap between where all the children of the district should be and where they are. You will hear of their...of the appalling failure as regards those most in need of help, and you will hear a clear vision of what this district could be.
Thank you.
Transparent, inclusive, and focused.
Thank you, Craig. Seth Jacobson. No relationship, right?
No, with a face.
Hi, I'm Seth Jacobson. I'm a parent, education activist, and I'm a former housing commission chair from here in Santa Monica and former 12-year resident of Santa Monica. I'm here tonight because earlier this week, I worked in my son's classroom, and when I walked into a classroom, which was a second and third grade classroom, there were over 35 children in that classroom and one teacher. We cannot afford to fail our students, especially in the coming years. We need change in this district, and I'm one of three candidates that's dedicated to making the significant change in a way that makes this district do different way it does business. We need to make sure that children are not in classrooms of 35 or more, and we need innovation, creativity, excellence, and most importantly, grander and greater achievement for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Maria Leon Vasquez, please.
Good evening. I'm Maria Leon Vasquez, and as a mother of two graduates of our district, I know the importance of providing an excellent education to all of our children. Through my leadership and hard work in this district, we have continued to see our test scores rise, and as a result of this, many of our students that have graduated have moved on to great education in four-year universities. I attribute this to the collaborative work and dedication of all our teachers, our support staff, and administrators. During these challenging economic times, it's imperative that we have experienced improving leadership to maintain control of our budget and prioritize the needs of our families and teachers. We have maintained our fiscal control by opening, you know, new streams of revenue in the city and in our district. We are maintaining a strong academic program and music programs, as well as libraries and nurses, and lowering our class size in K-1. There is great work that occurs in this district on a daily basis, but many of these would not happen without the collaboration and unprecedented work of everybody.
Thank you, Maria. All right, now I'm going to explain the format. It's a little complicated, but stay with me. Each candidate will be given the opportunity to answer a variety of questions with a maximum of one minute for each response. We will start with questions asked by representatives of the cosponsoring organizations. Representing the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica this evening is Joanne Levitt, who is the president. Representing the Santa Monica Malibu PTA is their president, Patty Braun. We will then have a question asked by Crystal Williams, a member of the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica Student Unit at Santa Monica High School. These questions will be...will each be answered by all six candidates. The remainder of the forum will be devoted to written questions from the audience, as well as questions submitted prior to the forum. This portion of the forum will include rounds during which all candidates answer the same question, a round during which each candidate will answer two different questions, a round that asks each candidate to choose a question from the prior round, and we may have time for a lightning round or two. To conclude the forum, each candidate will be given 60 seconds to comment, rebut, augment, or clarify any topic raised during the forum. Candidates will speak in reverse order of opening statements. We ask that you please hold your applause until the end of the forum. That will keep the proceedings impartial and allow us to ask as many questions as possible. So the first panel question will be asked by Joanne Levitt, who is the president of the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica. Joanne.
The League of Women Voters at both state and national levels supports accessible, high-quality, early education program for all children, enabling all to enter school ready to learn. How policy-wise can you encourage early learning programs in Santa Monica-Malibu to be better integrated, both in the K-12 system and in the school site culture?
Thank you, Joanne. Craig, will you handle that first?
Sure, I'd love to. So, our intention as members of the school board is to task the superintendent with creating an overarching plan for P-12 success for all the children of the district. And that can't happen just in the classroom. It has to happen in the community. It has to happen with the parents, and it has to happen before they ever get to kindergarten. So, we have a wonderful program now, and we need to build a better plan to encourage those children, to give them every opportunity to succeed, to get them into the system and get the whole community wrapped around them to the point that they start the school, start kindergarten with the skills they need, and they continue to prosper and develop as they go along. And that would absolutely be included in the overall plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Craig. Ben Allen, please.
Well, this is a wonderful question, and it is an issue that is actually taking up a lot of our attention right now on the school board. You know, early childhood education programs are so critical to giving kids that extra...that extra head start they need when they...before they get to school and start in kindergarten. That's one of the reasons why we are so excited about the new Cradle to Career Initiative that the district is launching. We're going to be discussing it, in fact, tomorrow night at the...at the school board. This is to try to create a more integrated, more comprehensive, more inclusive, more efficient system that really does bring together the little ones from all over our community, from various places on the socioeconomic strata, who will really...and a program that will really be effective for them. Right now, there's a lot of piecemeal, and our program is not as integrated and as coherent as we'd like it to be, and we're moving to change that. Another part of the question referred to school site culture, and I think it's a really important one. A lot of times, people on the campuses don't quite get how important early childhood is, and we need to make sure that they understand it.
Thank you.
How important it is for our educational mission.
Thank you, Ben. Seth Jacobson, please.
Well, this is an issue very near and dear to my heart, having three children who have gone through the Santa Monica-Malibu system. And one of the fundamental issues that we, as a forum slate, want to deal with is the fact that this current board has failed to unify the K-12 system with the early education programs. And we want to take a look at the...how that has worked, bring together the schools, the preschools, and the other pre-education organizations with the K-12 organization, empower the superintendent to work collectively to make this a cooperative relationship, because there is no more important thing than to start off with a good base and a fundamental relationship between the young child and the school district. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Jose Escarse, please.
Thank you for the question. I think one of the biggest shortcomings in the educational system of the nation and the state is really the failure to have universal preschool. Preschool is essential to prepare all children for school, and in fact, it turns out that it's particularly important for disadvantaged children. And because of the way our system works, it turns out that it's disadvantaged children that are the least likely to attend preschool. I think there's a wonderful model for community-school partnerships, if you will, or coordination. It's called the Harlem Children's Zone, and it's housed in Harlem, as the name suggests. And it is a...it's a program particularly for disadvantaged children in which there are supports...there's not only preschool for the children, but there are supports for the children and for their families, really from the time that they're born. And I...it has always seemed to me that this is a program that our community, and it would require their community, of course, not just the school system, could really embrace, since the number of truly disadvantaged children in our community is really...is relatively small.
Thank you. Maria Leon Vasquez, please.
Well, you know, one of the key things, I think, in this community is that we come together as one in terms of handling the situation and really embracing our kids before pre-K, that we are legally bound in this district. But we have a district-wide advisory committee that works with childcare issues. We have also a child task force that runs from the city of Santa Monica in collaboration with our before and after-school programs. All of these organizations and separate entities work collectively and meet on a monthly basis and not every couple of weeks to collaborate, to make sure that all the needs of all our kids, from birth to...to when they enter our school district in pre-K, their needs are being taken care of. And we work very hard to make sure and guarantee that whatever the needs are, that we will come together and find solutions to make sure that the needs are taken care of. The other big piece that Ben mentioned was our Cradle to Career Initiative, that we are taking a big role in to make sure that we can expand our services here in the city.
Thank you, Maria. Karen Farrer, please.
I can't disagree with practically anything that anyone has said before me. As we all know, early education is critical. Kindergarten readiness is essential to all students, especially students of color. I'd like to see more programs like what we have at Child Development Services with Judy Abdo. And I'd like to point out that one of the primary tenets of PTA, which I've been a leader in for 21 years, is fostering a stronger relationship between the school and the home. We need smaller class sizes. We need money going into our classrooms and out of our bureaucracy. I'd like to see a thorough examination of how we get money back into the classrooms, back into our primary grades. Once the kids leave the primary grades, we cannot make up for the time that they've lost. This is one of the things I'd like to do.
Thank you, Karen. Ready for our next question, which will be asked by Patty Braun, who is the president of the Santa Monica Malibu PTA Council.
Good evening. PTA's motto is "Every Child, One Voice." Since board members are elected at large, how will you fairly represent every child in Santa Monica and Malibu with the same level of concern and understanding when the issues facing the schools in the two cities are sometimes so different?
Karen, do you want to lead us off on that one?
I've been a member of the Executive Board of PTA Council, that's the Santa Monica-Malibu PTA Council, for the last nine consecutive years. Every other Tuesday, I wear out the road coming here from Point Dime. If I didn't care about the entire district, I wouldn't have done that. I think you can imagine. What I've been sorry to see is what I consider a double standard, that there are many in Santa Monica who think that they're able to make decisions on the part of Malibu, but there seems to be an underlying current that someone from Malibu would not be able to make decisions on the part of Santa Monica. I'd like to be given the chance. I think I've already demonstrated my ability, and I certainly would be for the entire school district.
Thank you, Karen. Maria, V.
Well, I think in my role here as a school board member in these...in these years that I've been on the board, I think we've been very open in terms of the support that we've given all children in this district. All our programs, all our activities, and everything that we do in this district has always been in the best interest of all the children. When I first ran in 2000, that was the main, you know, emphasis for me, is that I wanted to make sure that all children in this district had a great education. And it...for me, it's never been a district that's been Malibu or Santa Monica. It's a unified school district. It's a Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District. So I think the needs of all children have been met. Yes, in the last four years, we have not had a representative from Malibu on this board, but did that mean that any of us on this school...on existing board, or myself, have taken a step any less in terms of the support and the needs to meet the needs of Malibu students? And I don't think we have. I think we've been here strong to support all children in this district, and I will continue to do that.
Thank you, Maria. Craig Foster, please.
One of the reasons that we're running is that we've lived in a culture of neighborhood against neighborhood in this school district, and that needs to change. It's not hard. It just involves, first of all, putting the needs of every child at the very tip-top of the agenda. Then it needs something that's also been lacking, which is a lot of communication, a lot of transparency, and a lot of outreach. What we need to do to make sure that we take care of every child is that we work together as a one community and as a set of communities underneath that to air the questions that need to be decided, to listen to all the different people and their needs, and to bring that together in a way where we can put a plan together that takes care of absolutely everyone, and they feel their voice has been heard. And one of my experiences is, if your voice has been heard and you've been in the process, you're okay with the decision, even if it may not go this way your time, because you feel like you've been heard.
Thank you. Thank you, Craig. Jose Escarse, please.
I think that to represent schools, you need to really understand the needs of the different schools, and you need to allocate the resources that the schools need to provide an excellent education, and you need to do that on an equitable basis. And I think that the board that I've been on, and I have a proven track record in this regard, I'll tell a couple of stories. About eight or nine years ago, when we were...10 years ago, when we signed our first contract with the city of Santa Monica, back then it was for $6 million, there were some in the city who suggested that money shouldn't go to the Malibu schools. I, neither I nor anyone else on my board, ever considered that possibility. We're one district, and we distributed that money completely equally. Now, that money is up to nearly $15 million, and we would never consider the alternative. When we understood that Malibu High School, it's so little, 675 students, needs extra faculty so that they can teach a wide array of advanced placement courses, so that their students can compete for the best colleges, we provided those. When we understood that Malibu High School needed to play football at night on Saturdays, because that's what they do in the United States of America...
Thank you.
...we are fighting against Malibu neighbors to get those lights up so that they can play Monday Night Football.
Thank you.
That is representation.
Thank you. Seth Jacobson, please.
Well, the first thing we need to do is rethink and reimagine the way the district does business. And what does that mean? Well, the first thing we've committed to do is, when we get elected, is we're going to have a listening tour, and we're going to go to every community, and we're going to listen, and we're going to hear what the concerns are of the community, which is what we think that as...unfortunately, as a minority in Malibu, we haven't been listened to. So we think that as that unrepresented body, we know what it's like not to be heard, and so we're going to work extra hard to make sure that every child's concerns are addressed. That's number one. Number two is we will look to change the way the system works. It's great that there are so many committees and commissions and organizations like that, but it's not working. Maybe we need to rethink how business is done. There are a lot of other opportunities out there in districts out there and models that we should be looking at on how to do business. Thank you.
Thank you. Ben Allen, please.
Well, I'm actually really proud to be the only candidate sitting up here who's been endorsed by multiple members of sitting city council members in both Santa Monica and Malibu. I'm the only candidate who's been endorsed by both the Santa Monica and Malibu Democratic Clubs. And I think it's because I've really worked hard in my four years on the board to be a bridge builder. I go to meetings, I go on the sports events, and I really try to...I spend like...I feel like sometimes I live on the PCH driving back and forth. I also try to be a thoughtful person who makes decisions that are in the best interest of all of our students. We also, along with Maria and Jose, I've been endorsed by the Santa Monica and Malibu Classroom Teachers, and I think that also has to do with the work that I've done trying to keep our focus on reducing cuts to the classroom and really be smart about instruction and making sure that that's our...that's our constant focus. So it's about communication, it's about bridge building, it's about thoughtfulness. I really strive to be that kind of board member, and that's why I've been able to enjoy the support from...from leaders from both of our communities.
Thank you, Ben. Good job on the one minute, everybody. Thank you. It's now time for questions submitted by the audience and through pre-forum outreach. So let's turn to our first round. For this round, I will be asking a series of questions that will be answered by all six candidates. First question. A number of you have proposed to pay for specific things by reducing administrative bureaucracy. Every study I've seen shows that bureaucracy is around 5% to 7% in our district, and that was before the cuts started. That's leaned to the point of bony. Given the educational and organizational demands of a successful school district of our size, do you believe the district's bureaucracy is too large? If you do, please specify which parts of administration you would reduce or eliminate. Let's start with you, Ben.
Well, this has certainly been a big part of our work, unfortunately, as we've gone through dealing with the budget cuts that we've taken. As you may know, we're now getting almost $30 million less from the state than we were supposed to have under Proposition 98. And so, since John Daisy was the superintendent just before I got on the board, we have cut back on administrators here in the district office by 50%. We have worked really hard to keep the cuts as far away from the classroom as possible, and it's one of the reasons why, you know, even though our class sizes have crept up, we still continue to have among the smallest class sizes in the state. We've been able to preserve arts and music and counseling and libraries and nurses at a time when those programs have been virtually eliminated in other school districts. So, you know, this is...this is going to be a continuing part of our work. We really hope that either Proposition 30 or 38 will pass so that we can make sure that we get the revenues we need to keep our program strong. But we...my work is focused a great deal on keeping cuts as far away from the classroom as possible, and that's what I'm going to continue if I'm reelected.
Thank you, Ben. Seth Jacobson, please.
Well, there's...our team has looked at a variety of other districts around the region, and we've seen the ability of a district equal size to operate its administrative and finance department with less than half the number of people that are here in Santa Monica-Malibu. We've seen districts that can operate their transportation areas with less than half of the number of people that are here in Santa Monica and Malibu. So it can be done, and there is...there is waste, and there is administrative issues that can be handled. But the bottom line is, we can't do that. We cannot balance the budget on the backs of the teachers. We have to bring more teachers back into the...into the classroom. The second thing we can do is we can allow Malibu to separate from Santa Monica. That'll bring $4.6 million into the coffers and 20 to 30 new teachers here in the district. It would be a huge boost to both communities.
Thank you, Seth. Maria Leon Vasquez, please.
Well, I think if we look at our administrative ranks in terms of what we've done in the past, you know, since I've been on the board since 2000, I mean, you've, like Ben mentioned earlier, we've done a lot of cutting, and we've reduced as much as we can. We need to have, since we are a thriving, strong district, we need to make sure that we maintain our administrative people, our personnel, that is especially within like our educational services arena, where we do a lot of hard, hard work and looking at potential, you know, new means of services that we can provide our students to upgrade our academic programming and so forth. So when we look at those pieces, it's really difficult to say that we're going to even go further. Does that stop us? No. Every year, because since we've been hit with a budget crisis, we have gone back and we think and we reorganize to figure out what is it that we can eliminate and continue to still...to provide the great services that we do in terms of...for the kids. So one of the key things is providing more streams of revenue.
Thank you. Thank you, Maria. Jose Escarse, please.
I won't repeat what Ben said regarding how we have slashed administration over the last few years. What I will say is that, you know, we all understand that teachers are the heroes and the, I'll say, the drama of education in the classroom, and they're the ones that we expect to work magic. But for teachers to work that magic, they need a very dense network of supports from the people who clean their classrooms and set up their equipment, to the principals who supervise them and help to improve their skills, to the people in the central office, teachers retire...usually teachers, used to be teachers, who help them to develop curriculum frameworks and to adopt standards and who help as well to supervise them and to prepare professional development for them. We actually have a very, very thin administration. Now, our opponents have compared us to other districts. They always say we spend less, more on administration per student, but they never say that we spend much more on instruction per student as well, and that we have better student-to-teacher ratios. My final point would be that there is one group in every district that is willing to slash administrators...
Thank you.
...until the end of the day, and that's the Classroom Teachers Association, the teachers' union.
Thank you.
And they have endorsed the three of us.
Thank you. Karen, please.
Well, I have to disagree with Dr. Escarse. Our administrative costs are high, and we have compared our district to others here in Southern California, and those are districts... in Southern California, and those are districts with similar numbers of low-income students. I would like to see administrative cuts examined thoroughly and cut administrative services. It might take outsourcing. We do have redundancy, we do have waste, and I'd like to expand on what Seth said about unification. And oddly, that is a term for separating Malibu and Santa Monica into two districts. That is a long legal and administrative process. If it were accomplished, we could bring in a lot of money, $4.6 million. That equals 30 teachers, probably 20 for Santa Monica and 10 for Malibu. That is one of the goals, if it's feasible, and many on this current board have agreed that they would like to explore that with us.
Thank you, Karen. Craig Foster, please.
So we have to remember, again, that it's all about taking care of each child and making sure they have the chance for success in school. And what fascinates me is the utter resistance of the school board for inquiring into these questions. They say, "Oh, we've cut overhead." Well, cutting overhead doesn't mean that you're lean, it just means you had a lot of overhead to begin with. So Conejo Valley runs, and Conejo Valley's got eight of 18 schools that are Title I schools, and they have very high levels of achievement. They're very comparable. They have 22,000 students. They run for less than half of our cost. They, if we were to get to their level, which is not necessarily a goal, but if we were to get to their goal, their level, we would save $7 million, which is more than all the trigger cuts we're talking about this year. So my question and my commitment to the voters of Santa Monica and to the children of Santa Monica is, if elected, we'll have an open mind and we'll look into these questions.
Thank you, Craig. It's our next question. If both Propositions 30 and 38 on the statewide ballot fail in November, and the legislature doesn't figure out how to modify the trigger cuts, the school board will have to deliberate on potentially deep staffing and program cuts. Most of you have stated that you would keep cuts far from the classroom. I don't know what that means. We're already running so lean. If both propositions fail, Santa Monica, Malibu will be faced with approximately $5 million in cuts that will need to be made immediately. At this point, don't all cuts ultimately affect the classroom? Please specify what you would propose to cut that doesn't affect the classroom, and remember, again, we would be facing $5 million worth of cuts to balance the budget. Seth, do you want to lead us off?
Thank you. That's an excellent question, and we've given it a lot of thought. And I think there are two things we need to look at. Number one is, we need to look at potential revenues, and I think that in the face of the potential budget cuts, it's probably really important that we go out to the community and we tell them that these things are coming down the road, and there may be the need for a parcel tax, or there may be a need to raise revenues in the coming year. The second thing is, in terms of cuts, there are, there is the ability to make significant cuts, and as Craig mentioned, there is the ability to raise between $4.6 million if Malibu and Santa Monica separate. If we cut overhead, we could possibly raise as much as $7 million. So the opportunity's there, we think we can do it. It's going to take a concerted effort and lots of communication, and we can do that.
Thank you, Seth. Maria Leon Vasquez, please.
Well, I think the need is going to be very immediate. The whole issue of separation wouldn't even take place probably until about three or four years from now. So what are we looking at? We have to be able to raise, you know, some revenue quickly. One of the things that has been, you know, been contemplating, and we did that, you know, in the summer when we convened a committee, was to look to see whether we would be launching a parcel tax or a construction bond. And at that time, it polled that a parcel tax, because of the percentage that we needed at voters, turned out, wouldn't be feasible. But at the time, in November, if we're pushed to that position, if 30 and 38 don't pass, then we will have to convene the community again and really look at and do some soul searching to make sure that we can guarantee the parcel tax to be put on the ballot soon. The other piece of it is that we have moved forward with district-wide fundraising and as a means of revenue raising, and we hope that that piece, in the same spirit that we ran our Save Our School campaign, we can move to district-wide fundraising.
Thank you, Maria. Karen Farrar, please.
Yes, obviously, if 30 and 38 both fail, it's bad news for everyone and not just in this district. The district would have to consider cutting costs, as we said in the previous question, administratively first, in my opinion. We would need to increase revenue. I received the poll about whether I supported a parcel tax or a bond, and I answered that I supported a parcel tax. I realize that's a higher threshold to get that passed. I think it can be done. I think if Malibu feels that this district cares about them, then Malibu voters will support it, but there's often been a feeling of disconnect and lack of concern and really missing in action of many of our school board members, not Ben, I will say that. We do need more involvement here at the central office out in Malibu. If you're going to have community support, you have to work for it. It doesn't just float in. District-wide fundraising, I have high hopes for it. I do fear that without community involvement, it will fail.
Thank you, Karen. Ben Allen, please.
Well, one, first of all, this question really dramatizes how important it is that people get out and vote yes on Propositions 30 and 38. It's a much more important election than this school board election, and all of us will be in deep trouble, whoever gets elected, if both of those measures fail. There is one other potential light at the end of the tunnel, and that's the possibility that the Democrats win two-thirds of both houses of the state legislature, and that could be a game changer in terms of revenue at the state level as well. I wanted to say that the school board has actually put our district in a much stronger place to answer this very question than most school districts, because we actually have a healthy reserve. We built up a healthy reserve because of how incredibly uncertain the financial circumstances have been in the state, and I'm really glad that it's there. It'll allow us to pay down for the rest of this school year. We've looked at it, we don't feel as though we'd have to make cuts this school year, and then we'd have the kind of community meetings that Maria's talking about to really look how we make the decisions we need to make for the following year. But I absolutely agree that revenues need to be part of the conversation and possibly a second-generation Prop Y and YY type situation.
Thank you, Ben. Jose Escarse, please.
So it would indeed be a tragedy, and it's a real tragedy that 30 and 38 are picking away at each other and probably hurting one another's support, but that's where we are, and we need to vote for both. Obviously, if those fail, we would support and hope for statewide solutions, and we would try to find local solutions, whether there are parcel tax or some other alternatives sort of like Measure Y and YY. It seems, if all of that failed and we really needed to cut, we would, we've already cut $11.5 million over the last few years, and the process has been one of working with our administration and with the community and taking community input to decide on which cuts to make, and it is those cuts that have led to a nearly halving of the administrative cost. I would say one more thing, and this is sort of in clarif, to clarify what my colleague said. One of the things that I think we've done very well, and in fact have received praise from Craig for the way we've done this, is to balance cutting with spending down our reserve. A few years ago, we had well over $20 million in reserves.
Thank you, Jose.
We are now down, and it's going to be depleted soon.
Thank you. Craig Foster, please.
A school district's an organism, and it runs on trust, and it runs on faith, and it runs on enthusiasm. And that trust and faith and enthusiasm has been frittered away over the last dozen years. When we come with a parcel tax or a bond measure or a district-wide funding plan, it's something that automatically people should want to support, because this is their district, and it's their children, and it's their town, even if it isn't their children. And when it's done cavalierly, when it's done not listening to all the voices in the district, when people feel unconsidered or overrun, they're not going to respond well, and you can't count on them when there's an emergency. So there's lots of ways to solve this. The first way is what we talked about, which is we can look at administrative costs. District-wide fundraising is not meant to be spent on classrooms. We needed to have changed that from the beginning, and we can change that now. I'm about to run out of time, but there's any number of other ideas we can implement.
Thank you. Well, I have a follow-up question, so you might be able to get to it there. Up till now, although the school district has experienced reductions in staffing and other resources, we've been able to avoid the really deep cuts other districts around the state have suffered. Some districts have declared the cuts have been so severe that there's nowhere else to cut except the length of the school year. Again, we are looking at the scenario in which both Prop 30 and 38 fail, and the school district is placed with approximately $5 million in cuts that need to be made immediately. Within that context, to preserve programs and avoid losing valuable staff, would you consider reducing the length of the school year by five to 15 days a viable alternative, at least temporarily? Craig?
I'm not sure what the alternative is, in terms of that question. Yes, I would absolutely consider it. I think that the amount of time in school is essential. It wouldn't be my first choice. I would go through the entire list of things. But what we need to do is we need to look at the big picture. We need to include everything as a possibility, and we need to look at it. That's why looking at other districts' operating cost is so important. We need to look at things like with our capital money, we could be spending money to reduce resources. We could be putting solar panels on our roof, on every roof, and eliminate our electric bill because we prepaid those for the next 30 years. That's not going to help us in the immediate run, but if we were to do these things over time, we would be in great shape. We should be doing a parcel tax. I would do a parcel tax long before I would cut time of the school year. But we need to get together as a group and talk about our best ideas with nothing off the table, because that's how great ideas come out.
Thank you, Craig. Jose Escarse, please.
So I think the idea, the fact that many districts are contemplating and some have cut the school year by as much as five, 10, or 15 days, really, in a sense, illustrates the degree to which we have disinvested in children, which is another sort of mind-boggling phenomenon going on right now. But if we're in that situation, I think that we will have to look at every, you know, at everything we can do in terms of generating revenues and in terms of cuts. It seems to me that shortening the school day, I mean, the school year, at least somewhat, is a fairly attractive option. Now, it's really important to understand that cuts in the school year cannot be done unilaterally by the school board. Those have to be negotiated with our bargaining units. We've already had two years, not this one, but the two previous years where we actually shortened the school year by five days. Our bargaining units, who have been magnificent partners with us in getting through this crisis and tremendously collaborative, agreed to that.
Thank you.
They would have to do so again.
Thank you. Karen, please.
Cutting the school year is something that I would dread to see happen. I think it would be a shame. Again, we could go to a parcel tax, only if Malibu felt included. I realize the last one failed in Malibu, and, you know, when you're out on the sidelines looking in, it's not a good scenario to ask for more money. We do have to examine all options. I think there's been a resistance to that, there's been a resistance to change in general. I think we do have to look at other sources of revenue. It may come to the point of considering soliciting naming rights on our campuses, something I'm not really looking forward to, but I think it's something that we do have to look at.
Thank you, Karen. Seth Jacobson, please.
I actually think that until we sit down with the teachers' union and look at all kinds of creative options, like they've done in LAUSD, where they've worked collectively with the union to come up with a way to avoid furlough days, I think that's what we need. We need that kind of leadership, the leadership they've shown in those districts where the school board has worked collectively with the teachers' union to come up with ways. So maybe the furlough days wouldn't be as severe. The other thing we need to do is, there clearly is money to be found in the district. I mean, in 2010, the district said it was going to run a $12 million deficit. That suddenly disappeared. So there clearly is a way to find cuts, and in addition to naming rights and other issues, I think we can find ways to raise significant corporate dollars.
Thank you, Seth. Maria, please.
Well, I think we, the last thing, I think, for myself is to see that we're going to be reducing the number of days in the classroom. And like we said, and my colleagues, we have sat on the table in previous years to negotiate those pieces when we have had furloughs about a couple of years ago. But one of the key things that we have to kind of take into consideration, that in the process of doing that, we have to kind of extend, you know, our ability to be able to raise the revenue. I think the direction that we were going with in terms of district-wide fundraising is not so much the needs that are going to be filled by that fundraising, but the fact that as a whole community, we've moved forward to show the community at large that, as a community, we are moving to, for programming for all our kids. And I think as a result of that vision from this district, that as a whole, we're moving forward, we were able to get a good, you know, donation to, the first donation that we did, based on that district-wide fundraising philosophy of 4.8.
Thank you, Maria. Ben, please.
Yeah, great question. I mean, the fact is, though, that we actually have been putting up solar panels up at all of our schools. We've been renting out spaces for the community to use at our schools, and that was just an article in the paper about it the other day. We've cut back on spending, we found efficiencies and made some very important grants. In the last year alone, we saved a couple million dollars and gained a little bit as well as a result of that work that we did. Maria mentioned the fact that we've stepped up fundraising significantly. We got a grant of nearly $5 million to the school district, to the education.
Each one of you will get your own question, and you'll get two of them. I'm going to start off with you, Karen. This is a question from the audience. Please share what you know about Avid, A-V-I-D, and our Jump Start programs and why they are important.
I'm a big fan of Avid. I know it's been very successful at both Malibu High and Santa Monica High. In fact, I'd like to see both of them expanded. I've learned a lot in this campaign, and I was reading about Avid recently. It was started at one school in San Diego when, I think it was a busing issue. There was a very high-achieving suburban school that suddenly found itself with a lot of urban students who were not high-achieving. This program was developed by one teacher. It is now in thousands of schools. It's extremely successful. It's for students in the middle who otherwise would not go to college. I believe in it. I'd like to see it expanded. I'm personally friends with the woman who runs it at Malibu High School. Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Ben Allen. This year, we have two sets of candidates with clearly defined and very different ideas about how the district should be governed. How do you propose to work cooperatively with other board members during your term of office, should you be elected?
Collaboration and bridge building has been a critical part of the way I've viewed my work on the school board, and it's why I enjoy the support from all my colleagues on the board, and as I said before, members of the city councils of both Malibu and Santa Monica, the Santa Monica and the Malibu Democratic Clubs. I'm bringing these up just to make the point that this is something I actually think I really work hard at, is trying to build relationships, to be there, to show up at meetings, to get to know people, and really be the kind of person who can help to bring coalitions together to get things done for kids in our district. So I think that's an area that I work on really, and I really work to make a strength.
Thank you, Ben. Craig Foster. Much has been made of the low proficiency rate of students of color on some state tests, yet more than 80% of these same students pass the high school exit exam. How do you explain this discrepancy, and what do you trust?
That's easy. The KC, the high school exit exam, is given with two levels. There's the passing level, and then there's the proficient level. And unfortunately, the world we live in is proficient is harder to be than passing. So less than half of our African-American students are proficient on that exit exam, and just over half of our Latino students are proficient on that exit exam. So unfortunately, I wish it were true, the other statistic, but the simple fact of the matter is that those statistics and the other statistics that have been quoted are actually congruent, and we do have a major, really appalling achievement gap in our schools, and it's most apparent in high school. And unfortunately, people will point to the grade school experience where the achievement gap is less, but the end product of our educational system is high school, and that's where the failures are most manifest.
Thank you, Craig. Jose Escarse. Shrinking financial resources is one of the most difficult issues facing the current and future board. If you identified $1 million in new funding that had to be spent in the coming fiscal year, based on what you know today, what would be your single top priority for use of those funds?
These are recurring dollars or one-time dollars?
One-time.
Oh, wow.
You have to spend it in a year. You have to spend it in a year.
I'm going to, I'm going to assume it's recurring. Every year, I'm going to get an extra $1 million. If I'm going to get an extra $1 million every year, I would do two things. The first thing that I, well, three. The first thing that I would do is I would really invest an amount of that, a chunk of that, on professional development for teachers to improve their, their craft, to help them to improve their craft. As part of that, I would devote a tremendous amount to, to professional development in reading instruction and in, and in getting reading specialists to support the students, particularly in our schools where there are lower levels of reading proficiency. And third, I would reduce class size in the earliest grades. Right now, we have small class sizes in K through 1. I mean, and, and, but we've raised class sizes in 2 and 3, and I would use the, the money remaining to reduce class sizes in 2 and 3.
Okay. Seth? This is another question from the audience. What are you going to do to ensure the success of the district's centralized fundraising policy, which will lead to excellent programming for all our children?
Well, as a member of the committee that, that worked on building the policy, I can tell you that it's, the only way it's going to work is if we build alliances with the parents. The parents are the fundamental fundraising source for the funds that come into the schools, for stuff, not staff. And they need to feel engaged. They need to feel empowered. And unfortunately, the policy, the way it is now designed, does not empower parents. So we need to go back and figure out a way to recreate the policy and to build those bridges between the school district, the educational foundation, and the parents. And the only way that trust can be built is by engaging them in a dialogue and not passing the process as it was done in 30 days, and then figuring out how to work it out, but going back and figuring out how to empower the parents and make them part of the decision-making process. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth. Maria. Intelligent people look for good ideas. What ideas about closing the achievement gap do you hold now that you didn't hold five years ago?
Well, one of the good things that I've done in the last probably four years is as I've now changed what I do, and been working with Santa Monica College. So one of the key things that we've been working there is I, I handle the career technical education programming there. And one of the key things that, that has been a big piece, an integral piece, that I've been working within my, our own staff in the programming is like Young Collegians and Connect for Success, jumps, the, the great, I forget, the summer school intervention pieces, is that we are trying to promote really the, the, the idea that hopefully students will develop a career and, and develop a pathway so that once they get through, through their educational pieces, their strong educational pieces here in the district, they can find a career so that they find the, the importance of going onto higher education because they can find the connection, the relevancy in terms of their, their high, their K through 12 experience here, their pre-K through 12 experience here in connection to jobs in the future.
Thank you, Maria. All right, second question. Craig, we're going to lead off with you. What is the role and value of career technical education in preparing our students for life after high school?
Thank you, Sandy. I love this question. I don't believe that there's one path to success in life, and I don't believe that any child is like any other child. So what's absolutely essential to me is that we offer a rich curriculum that includes success in the arts as a possibility, success in math, science, engineering, success in college-bound activities, success in non-college-bound activities. There is not one right path to success. I believe that every opportunity, ROP is a great program. I believe the apprenticeship programs that have been put in place are great programs, but they need to be dramatically expanded. And that's a brilliant way to get the community involved in our schools in a meaningful way so that when we need their help, they feel ownership and pride in those schools. So I think we need to think very hard at, at a very broad set of pathways to success for our kids.
Thank you, Craig. Ben. California's in the forefront of many areas of scientific research and study, and much of our state's economy is based on science and technology. What are your goals for what I'm hearing called STEM, science, technology, engineering, and mathematics in educating our children and youth?
It's a vital, vital part of a kid's education, and it's one of the reasons, we've actually prioritized STEM education in multiple levels. We have a STEM specialist school at Will Rogers. Our Point Dume School is a marine science academy. One of the major reasons why I'm so excited about Proposition ES, which is the bond measure we've put before the voters, is because it has such a significant technology component. I got to say, we are actually significantly way behind with regards to our tech. And I really, I'm hoping the bond will help step up our game in terms of access to technology, using technology more effectively in classrooms for more individualized education and instruction. And then more broadly speaking, keeping a, a, a strong focus on science and, and keeping kids excited and with all the wonderment and, and that comes along from, from learning about science and the natural world and, and all the phenomena that are out there. It certainly inspired me when I was a kid, and I'm really glad that we are, we, I really want to grow this STEM focus that we've started to build in the district.
Thank you, Ben. Seth. A letter to the editor said recently that school district parents need school board representation from candidates who are first and foremost parents with young kids in our schools right now. I say, as a grandmother, that community members with grandchildren in our schools and who have had kids go through the entire K through 12 system are just as eligible as our researchers who understand curriculum and school reform and PTA members who stay involved and active in our schools after their children graduate. What do you say?
I say that it's, it's about leadership, and it's about finding people who are committed to children and committed to education. And whether you're a grandparent or a parent like I am of three elementary school children, if, if you have the will, the desire, and the passion for education and the desire to make the school district a world-class district, you deserve a spot on this board. You deserve a spot in Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District. And unfortunately, right now, I don't think we have that passion with the existing incumbents. And we need to reinvigorate this board with new people and new ideas and fresh leadership. And I think that's where we're headed, and we're excited about that opportunity.
Thank you. Jose. Realizing cradle-to-career requires strong partnerships among the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District, the City of Santa Monica, and Santa Monica College. How would you work to ensure collaboration that is mutually respectful of the different governmental agencies and authorities, yet ensures collective impact?
I think we have a marvelous track record of doing these things. I mentioned, or at the beginning of the forum, that we have a, an agreement with the city, a joint-use agreement that we've had for many, many years in which the city, in exchange for use of our playgrounds, provides funding to the school district. And we also, together, worked on Measures Y and YY, which brought a lot of additional revenue to the district and to the city because it's sort of split 50/50. In addition to that, we have developed, we've always had a really good relationship with the college, making many of their courses available to our students and making our campus available to them. And that relationship has only grown in the last few years with the creation of, for example, the Young Collegians program, which is another program like AVID for first-generation collegegoers. So I think the, there's no question that Cradle to Grave Initiative requires cooperation and collaboration. I already talked about the Harlem Children's Own model. That would require an extensive cooperation and collaboration. We have the track record of having done that.
Thank you, Jose. Maria Liam Vescas. The job of the school board is to set policy which the superintendent must be, must be then held accountable for implementing. What policies do you think are not working, and what new policies do you think we need to add?
Well, I don't, you know, I'm trying to think. Maybe the ones that, that, I really can't think of any ones that, that I don't think have been, that, that I can say have not been working. I think that some that maybe that we need to put in place is to kind of look in terms of, of supporting, you know, our, maybe looking at some more of our, our academic programming to make our principals, you know, and, and all our staff work with us clearly in, in making them, you know, a little bit more accountable in terms of the, of the results that we get back in terms of, of our children. But then again, it would take the collaboration piece that we've always done in terms of working with all our administrators to, to come up collectively to see what, you know, what benchmarks and so forth that we would want to see, you know, raised and to make sure that we achieve our, you know, our greater results at the end of, you know, our test course and so forth.
Thank you, Maria. Karen. How would you prioritize and support art, arts instructions in our school?
I'm a huge supporter of the arts, although I don't consider our family particularly talented. Prioritizing the arts, I think we've done a good job of that already, and, and I, I applaud the, the current board and superintendent for maintaining our arts. I realize, though, that without a huge influx of private money, our arts programs would dwindle between the, the parent music group at Sam Ojai and the parent Arts Angels at Malibu High School. We could not get by without that, so we never, we can never forget that. I, I'd love to see more money for the arts. I, I don't consider them a fringe part of our district, especially this district. They are a priority now. I'd like to see them stay there.
Thank you, Karen. Okay. Now, I hope you've been listening to all of these questions. Excellent questions. Each candidate now has the opportunity to answer a question of their choice from the previous round. Any question that you have not already answered, so no fair if you go back on your own question.
I want to talk about which policies I would change because I just happen to have a notebook full of policies here. So the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District Board of Trustees and Superintendent protocols. Number one, keep teaching and learning as the primary focus of work. Policy 9,000. The board shall work with the superintendent to fill its major responsibilities, which includes setting the direction for the district through a process that involves the community, parents, guardians, students, and staff, and is focused on student learning and achievement. So this is the central reason why we're running for school board, is what we need in this district is we need to empower the superintendent to make an overarching plan with student achievement at its center, where every one of these programs that we have is reviewed and connected in a meaningful fashion so that from pre-K all the way through 12th grade, kids get the opportunity to learn. They get put back on track. If they get off track, the community's involved. Everybody feels ownership. We can raise more funds. We can take better care of our kids.
Thank you, Craig. And thank you for finishing in exactly one minute.
You're very welcome.
And you bought everybody a minute's worth of time. So Karen, how about now?
Okay. There was a question, I think it was given to Craig, about college prep courses versus vocational and other training. I'm also a strong believer in that. Although, for me personally, college prep is extremely important, and I'd like to see as many students as possible go in that direction, and I'd like to see them receive as much help as possible. I do realize that that is not everyone's strength, and that's not everyone's interest. I would like to see our schools continue their work in the arts. I'd like to see our schools offer students as much as possible, like we're doing in our, our OP program. I, I think our students have a lot to offer, but we cannot expect every single one to be doing those UC requirement courses.
Thank you, Karen. Maria.
Well, I think I'm going to tackle, you know, kind of bring in two. But the main thing is, is I've been one of the great supporters of, of the arts in this district. I think it's, it's one of those key components that needs to be part of the, the school curriculum. And I've been one of the ones that, on the board, that has tried to push in, in terms of integrate it into the actual school curriculum as one of those subject matters, especially in the high school, that it, the arts be part of the curriculum piece so that in the future, it, they're not always put, and, and they're not subject to, to cuts every year, depending upon how much money we have. The endowment that we did receive, you know, out of the 4.8, 2.4 was designated for the arts. So I'm happy to see that at least we have believers out there that, that nobody will ever take away that money in terms of the arts. And one of the other big pieces is that part of the arts for my, for my family is that it really enriches the lives of many of the children that are involved. And I think we have a lot of, of services that, that we, we engage a lot of children of color to be in part of this music program.
Thank you, Maria. Jose, please.
So I, I was going to do the arts, but Maria took it. All I would say is that we adopted a strategic plan for improving our arts program. And even during the time of budget cuts, we have, in fact, expanded the program so that now every single third, fourth, and fifth grader gets the arts. But I'm going to talk instead about our, our programs for preparing students who have, who are first-generation, at least potentially, collegegoers. In other words, who have no parents or other relatives who have been to college. And that includes AVID, which we've talked about before. And that's for a certain level of student who actually have pretty good grades. And we have begun an AVID program that is quite effective and that begins in our middle schools. And that's been, I think, one of the sources of success. And it's fascinating to see these students go through high school, and the ones that finish the AVID program end up going to terrific schools most of the time. Some of them actually leave the AVID program because they want to take electives and other courses, and they feel that they have basically gotten the benefits of the program. But we also have another program called Young Collegians, which is done and collaborating with Santa Monica College, and which is for students that are not quite at the AVID level, and that's also being incredibly successful.
Thank you, Jose. Seth?
Well, I'll tackle the issue of policies because I disagree with Board Member Vescas. I think that the fundamental policies that, that have failed are, as Craig mentioned, which is the board should lead, and the board should set policy, and then the superintendent should be empowered to do that policy. And there shouldn't be a micromanagement of the superintendent's job. And unfortunately, I think that that has been the policy of this board. And if we get elected, I think what we'll be able to do is engender a new sense of ideas, a new sense of creativity, and a new sense of drive towards empowering the superintendent and the sites. Each site needs to be empowered and given the opportunity to provide leadership in their areas so that as we've done in, in many schools in Malibu, we have an active parent body that's working with the community, working with the principal, and building on the exceptional achievement of those schools.
Thank you, Seth. Ben Allen, please.
I wanted to take the question about the role that grandparents and older parents can play in, in the school district. Because it's actually an issue that I took on, is something that I cared a lot about. You know, I grew up in this district. I went to schools here from kindergarten through 12th grade. I've seen a lot of my friends who love this district, grew up in this district, believe in this district, but they necessarily can't always afford to live in this district because of how much housing prices and how much cost of living has shot through the roof in this particular community. And that's one of the reasons why I pushed to create a new priority category for grandparents who live in our school district so that if, I figured, you know, if we're going to be, if someone, if we're going to give a permit, and we have limited the permits we give, but if we're going to give a permit, we'll make sure that someone whose grandparent lives in the district will get priority over some person who doesn't have a tangible connection with the community. That's because we have so many grandparents who care about our schools. And my mom is a perfect example. She volunteers at Edison every single day, every single week at least, and has been doing it now for the past five or six years with my niece and my nephew. So it's something I care a lot about, and I want to continue working on.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, so now we're going to do the lightning round. This one, you only have one word. Not one minute, one word. We have a little bit of time. So this is a question from the public. Do you support or oppose Measure ES, the school district's facilities bond that has been placed on the November 6 ballot? Again, this is a lightning round. We want only one-word answers. Your choices are between support or oppose. Please call out your answer after I call your name. Jose.
Support.
Craig.
Neutral.
Maria.
Support.
Seth.
Support.
Karen.
Oppose.
Ben.
Support.
Good work. All right. Little more time, so we're going to do another one. What person or persons most influenced your educational philosophy? Again, this is a lightning round, so give us the name only. I suppose if it's like your grandmother, you might have to say it was your grandmother. Please call out your, your answer after I call your name. Seth?
My wonderful parents who came all the way from Connecticut to see me tonight. And they're sitting right there.
Jose.
Jonathan Cazell.
Karen.
Sister Carol, my 11th grade English teacher.
Craig Foster.
Rafe Esquith.
Ben.
My parents as well, professor, and my mom's a high school teacher.
Maria.
My immigrant parents.
Okay. All right, so now we're going to do closing statements, and we're going to go in the opposite direction of the opening statement. And again, Seth? And again, 60 seconds, and forgive me if I have to cut you off. So we'll start with Maria.
Okay. Well, thank you all for allowing us the opportunity to present tonight. As you all know, our schools are being recognized on a world, national, and statewide level as a result of our academic and arts programs. And it wouldn't be, and this great work wouldn't have happened without the great work and leadership of our district. As a mother, I truly understand my work as a board member to fight for the rights of all our children to receive an excellent education, to learn to be great and civic and global citizens so they can enjoy great opportunities at the end of their journey with us in this district. I have been endorsed by our teachers and classified staff, Senator Sheila Kuehl, Zev Rosovsky, and plus many of my colleagues on the school and college board. It has been a privilege to play a part in the life of your children and would be honored to once again have your support on November 6. Thank you, Maria León Vázquez.
Thank you, Maria León Vázquez. Seth Jacobson, please.
Well, what we've heard tonight is from the three incumbents, we've done a good job, so reelect us. But good shouldn't be enough. Great is what we need. We need excellence, we need creativity, we need innovation. We need to reduce class sizes, we need to provide greater funding for pre-K, we need to reduce waste, move that money into the educational system, and increase the number of teachers. Most importantly, we need to consider the wonderful children that we have in this district and what they provide, and make sure that they have the world-class education that they deserve. And I believe that if you elect us to the Board of Education, that we can make that happen, and we can make that happen quickly. Thank you.
Thank you, Seth Jacobson. Craig Foster, please.
Antoine de Saint-Expi said, "Goal without a plan is just a wish, and wishing isn't making it so." What I hope to do, if you honor me with your vote and if I'm elected, is to have a plan based around the success of every child in this district, a plan with metrics to be monitored, a plan designed and executed by the superintendent with the board's supervision, not micromanagement. It would include multiple LifePass, it would include constant corrective mechanisms, it would include performance data, anecdotal data, lots of different things. It would address the learning environment. Safety is so important, and we can't make a safe school or a safe district without community and parent involvement. We need that organism to pull together to make this district extraordinary. And if we do that, then we can do, we can raise money in so many ways, and we can pull together and embrace our children.
Thank you, Craig Foster. Karen Farrar, please.
I'd also like to end with a quote. "They always say time changes things, but you actually have to change them yourself." That's from Andy Warhol. And in a district that values the arts, I thought it was appropriate. Our district is called the Santa Monica-Malibu Unified School District, although at the moment, many of us find it to be quite disunified. There's a deep rift right now, not just between Santa Monica and Malibu, but among many here in Santa Monica. I and my running mates have been approached by many in Santa Monica, and they're looking to us to make change. They're also looking to us to repair some of the deep rifts that have occurred, I would say especially within the last year. I'd like the opportunity to do that. As I said, I started as a parent here in 1991. I'll be a parent in this district until 2017. It must be some kind of a Guinness record. We have had endorsements from both Malibu and Santa Monica.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. Jose Escarse, please.
Thank you very much for coming tonight. You know, during my 12 years on the board, I've never wavered from my commitment to two principles, and I think they need to go together, and that's excellence and equality of opportunity. And it seems to me that the best predictor of future performance on something like this, unlike on mutual funds, is past performance, so I want to give you a quick tour. Since I've been on the board, test scores have risen greatly, and the achievement gap has narrowed. We've developed superb collaborative relationships with our teacher. We've expanded access to college-level advanced placement programs and increased the pass rates on those exams. We've institutionalized and improved programs for first-generation collegegoers. I mentioned them before. We've expanded elementary school music so that every kid would get it. We limited intrinsic permits to limit overcrowding, reduce overcrowding in our schools. And then faced with huge funding reductions from the state, we kept budget cuts away from the classroom, slashing administration to protect counselors, nurses, librarians, intervention programs, and elementary school music. I know we have a lot of work to do, but I still, but I have the passion, the experience, and the knowledge to do it. I'm Jose Escarse. Please give me your vote on November 6.
Thank you very much, Jose. Ben Allen, please.
Well, I want to thank everyone for being here tonight and all those who've watched this at home. I'm very proud of the record that Jose just articulated. I think in a very difficult time, the school board has worked really hard to maintain a very strong district, and I'm proud of many of the successes we've found. I've brought new monies and programs into the district, I've found savings, and I've really worked hard to be a bridge builder, a thoughtful, independent thinker with a lot of energy, but also now a good amount of experience. And that's why I've been supported by our teachers, Community for Excellence Public Schools, and folks from all across the political spectrum in both communities, leaders from the city councils of both towns, Republican and Democratic leaders, our police, and leaders from our police and Santa Monica's for Renters' Rights, but also our Chamber of Commerce and our teachers and staff. And that's because I really work, I don't necessarily agree with everybody, but I work really hard to be an independent thinker, someone who's always looking out for the best interests of our kids and our community, and I really hope to continue that work. My name is Ben Allen, and I humbly ask for your vote.
Thank you, Ben. Okay, now is your opportunity. At this time, we'd like to thank our candidates. Please give them a big hand. That was a big hand. And now, on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Santa Monica and the Santa Monica-Malibu PTA Council, we want to thank all of you for taking part in this candidate's forum and for stepping forward to run for office. We also want to thank you, our audience, for your interest. It takes all of us to make democracy work. And I have a quote that's a little bit like Karen's. It says, "Life has no remote. Get up and change it yourself." And that's what we're doing. Go to the polls and vote on November 6. Elections are won by those who show up. Good evening. (applause) (music)[1768.45]